The time is five thirty P M on Monday, September eighteenth, and I'd like to call this work session to order. First on our agenda are city updates. So Miss Solano, please take it away.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, City Council Mayor Gradisar. Just have two or three quick updates. But I would like to start with the twenty twenty four budget development calendar. And I set that handout in in front of you this evening. But you also need your phones if you look at your calendars. And I was going to show tell you and to see if what for direction from you asked for direction on finalizing the two back to back special work session dates. If we sit today at Monday, September the eighteenth, and we go down that list there in that handout, the mayor formally presents to City Council the budget submission for twenty twenty four on Tuesday, October tenth. You have the the proposed budget and the book the bound book on that evening. Then the budget submission to council is actually on the agenda for that night. It's a formal meeting. A week later, on Monday, October the sixteenth, the capital improvement budget will be presented and any questions you have between that first week. The city did meet the charter requirements and presented the proposed draft capital improvement plan to planning and zoning last Wednesday. Who do it understand it is in draft form, but it is required by charter to present their first. On October the twenty third, then moving into the following Monday, and you kind of need your city council work session plan. There is nothing on the agenda that evening except to date, except a special budget work session. So it's probably two hours to, you know, an hour and a half or or whatever questions and follow ups council may have indirect to staff to provide any special presentations from other departments that you are asking for. We can put in on October the twenty third. And then, like we did last year, we also reserved Tuesday evening, October the twenty fourth, as I think last year councillor winner suggested that we meet back to back evenings rather than a following Saturday or to continue to 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 schedule every Monday. So that Tuesday evening is on the the plan here. And I don't I don't know with what your direction might be to leave it there. Do we want to wait to see as we get closer? But there is planned a Tuesday evening with only any work, any budget questions that council may have for follow up presentations and for us to answer those questions. And then we move into the final city council work session opportunity before the first reading on Monday, November the sixth. And so with your direction, we'll we'll leave Tuesday, the twenty fourth on or do something different with it? Or is Tuesday night the wrong night that week?
The twenty fourth works for me. Is there anything? Is there anyone that does it does not work for? Seeing none, then I think that we send out calendar invites.
Thank you very much. Will do. Um, the second update I have is just a quick ARPA update in there since we have your meeting, formal meeting next Monday. On the agenda will be the real time crime center. I'm using ARPA dollars to support that purchase and the twenty five thousand dollars for the East Side mural with Mitchell Park with eighteen thousand dollars as personal services contract for Eric Saracino. That's on that agenda next week as well. The following a meeting we'll see, I think, the neighbor works. ARPA sub recipient agreement is ready to roll, and so that'll be on the agenda for October. Those are the three upcoming, you know, ARPA meet ARPA presentations to City Council. Neighbor Works has already presented with respect to their nine hundred thousand dollar request. I don't know if you'd like for me to reach out and ask for them to come back and remind council at all, or you're good to to move forward.
I think we're good. It was less than two months ago.
It was.
Does anyone have any?
It it suffered one of the city attorney changeovers for its delay.
Does anyone have any strong feelings about hearing them again? We're good.
And then the last update was for councillor Maestri, which all of you asked for. We will have it tomorrow. And that's the recap of the Tabor calculation for the last some several years, including the year of the ballot measure and the debruising was approved and the current year numbers with more detail to come on October the tenth. And that concludes city updates this evening. Any questions or directions for me?
Thank you, Miss Solano. Questions about city updates? I see none.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next on our agenda is our hearing from friends from the Colorado Smelter Superfund site. So can I please have Ms. Forrest, Mr. Van Otten, Ms. Bartley, and Ms. Archer to the podium? And just a note for my fellow councillors that we do have their presentation printed at our desks as well.
Thank you for having us.
We don't have Beth Archer with us this evening. She wasn't feeling well. I'm Sabrina Forrest, Lead Project Manager from the Environmental Protection Agency. And I've got Charles Van Otten, one of our new community involvement coordinators with me tonight, and Amanda Bartley, one of our new project managers. They're going to be giving the lion's share of the update to you all. And then if we've got some questions, I'll assist with that as needed. So we can move forward to the agenda. Next slide, please. Or is that something I can?
Yeah, you should be able to drive, actually, with the use of that remote.
There we go. Thank you. So introductions, and we will have a community properties update where we are with residential sampling, cleanups, commercial sampling and twenty twenty three plans. And then operable unit two, the former smelter area and the updates for that for twenty twenty three and our sampling status and some some other ongoing things that are happening in operable unit two.
All right. Madam Chair, City Council, thanks again for having us here to update you on what's going on with the Colorado Smelter site. Again, I'm Charles Van Otten, I'm the new C I C for the site. So first thing I want to cover is the work that's been done. These numbers I would write to you were from the end of August coming in here. So currently, we have nineteen nineteen hundred and fifty five soil sampled, sixteen hundred and fifty five dust samples taken. And then we've cleaned seven hundred and ninety properties. And as far as dust cleanup that's taken place, that's four hundred and ninety eight properties. And those are the numbers again for the end of August. We did have last call take place as far as the soil cleanup, and that was in July. We are still working with property owners to continue cleanup through the O U one area as and any outlying issues that might take place. And we're planning to have work run through the end of October, possibly in November, but right now it's looking towards the end of October. As far as the lead collaboration project, we do have some training taking place here in Pueblo at the P D P H E building. That's going to be lead awareness training. That's going to be focused on child, people who have take care of young children as well as any nurses or anything of that nature. It's not going to be super fun focused, but it is a part of the lead awareness that we're trying to bring to the Pueblo area. And then the on the same lines with the flood led testing is taking place, P D H P H E is still continuing to do that floodless testing. They have put in for an extension for that program, and hopefully that will get approved soon. And then we are working on more of a public facing dashboard for to take accountability of the properties that have been cleaned or not cleaned in the area and reasons why. And that's going to be a forward facing dashboard that that's going to be available to the public. We're testing it now. We're making sure the data presents itself adequately. And then once we have that done, we'll make sure we roll that out and give you guys a heads up on that. Depending on questions on this, I'll go ahead and move to the next slide.
I think they will.
Oh, sorry.
I did. It's a little too far forward.
All right. So now we're going to focus on the commercial properties inside O U one. First thing I want to say is most of the commercial properties in the area are hardscape, meaning they have cement or pavement over a lot of the property or buildings themselves, and we consider that to be protective. So if they do have that kind of covering the property, we're not going to go in and conduct sampling. Sampling we're doing are open soil properties that we can go in and get to the soil itself. Currently, we've had, we've tested thirteen commercial properties, and this testing will continue through the area. This is not connected to the O U one residential properties. This is a separate testing that's taking place. And any cleanup that needs to take place will happen when we have the quote unquote final rod or the next stage of the operation for O U one itself. That's when cleanup will take place. We're conducting testing, identify the properties that need to be cleaned, and then we'll carry that forward as we get the record decision updated. Any questions or concerns on the commercial side of the house for O U one? Perfect. Go ahead and move to the updates for O U one, the air dispersion dispersion model. So we began the air dispersion model, and we got some, the the data came back. It's coming back. We're almost complete with it. And what this is going to allow us to do when we take this and we combine it with the background study plan is going to make sure we have fully identified the boundaries of O U one, that none of the smelter as it exists, it needs, we need to extend the boundaries to include it. And once we have that finalized, we'll let you guys know what the final boundaries are going to be for you on itself. Depending on questions on that. If not, I'll pass it up to Amanda.
Councillor Forrest.
Yes. Explain to me the process that you're going to use to see whether or not the boundaries are extended.
Good question. I'll hand that over.
Yep. So what we did the last two Septembers in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, we looked at the study area boundary, so the black outline, and in each of those cases, we still had areas right on the northwest and on the southwest edge that needed cleanups. And so we wanted to make sure kind of the idea of getting a a clean margin and looking also with this air dispersion model, which is meant to look at how far do we think contaminants from the two hundred foot stack and the other shorter stacks that were at that smelter? How far would that contamination likely have gone? And so we really are hopeful that those last two expansions are done and that we're not going to need to do more expansion, that we've got kind of a good weight of evidence approach where we've reached the the final area that we think the smelter would have affected. And that's what this, the black outline currently represents.
And and when you, when you say that you are now looking at the commercial area to see whether or not there's cleanup there. Are you in, what would, how are you defining commercial areas? That businesses that have have ownership? And what about the slag piles that that are, I don't know, they're owned by the highway department or the city of Pueblo?
Right.
But is that considered a commercial area or not?
So the the operable unit two, the former smelter area, does have commercial properties. So if we look at one of the O U two maps that we'll get to shortly, we can see what operable unit two is really focusing on. Within this black boundary, there are commercial properties that are just, they're zoned differently than the residential properties. And then they have, you know, typically a lot of commercial history associated with them. But because they're within the the regular developed area in that study area boundary, we still want to characterize the open ground if we can to see, did the smelter deposition affect those areas? But they're not tied to the former smelter area use or those contamination areas. So part of what what Amanda has been working on is characterizing that former smelter area where the slag still is. And then the commercial properties that are surrounding that, also some natural areas that haven't been really developed at all yet that we want to characterize for possible ecological risk. So we really want to separate those O U one commercial properties because they're they're used differently than the former smelter area commercial properties, but yet they're part of that overall community area.
There must have been a period also where and I'm I'm looking and I'm thinking about Santa Fe heading south, which you go up. There's a business there called Dominic and Sons, and then down at the bottom was a service station. It seems to me that those properties, when nobody was looking, evidently put their buildings, put their parking lots right on top of slag. Am I wrong about that? Or is that, did that really happen?
Yeah, so those are part of that former smelter area that Amanda is helping to characterize.
You can tell in the hills outside their fencing that it's all slag.
Yeah, so that similarly is, and for a lot of those properties, so the Kemway down toward Dominic and Sons are mostly, again, hardscape that with asphalt or concrete around them that we see as a protective barrier. So we haven't really looked at the idea of characterizing those areas because they now have protective cover on them. And we don't really look at that area as the land use changing. And that it's a part of the process that Amanda may go into a little bit. But for operable unit two and the larger study area, we're doing some reuse and revitalization visioning work and interviewing the O U two property owners. So that, you know, that core of where the smelter was and those commercial property owners. We're also working with city planning and city housing services. Some of the transportation involved folks about kind of this overall area and what the master plan has in mind, as well as what do these private property owners have in mind for the future of their parcels? So kind of kind of a big picture of what's going on now? Where do we need to characterize contamination and how might that affect data gaps that we identify with future use plans in the area, whether it's these private property owners or the larger cities' master plan that could change how those areas get used, where the smelter was, or some of these, the the natural areas that we'll see on an upcoming slide.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so to introduce myself again, my name is Amanda Bartley. I'm also with the EPA. I'm one of the remedial project managers working on both operable unit one and operable unit two. So a summary of what's happening in operable unit two, which is the green shaded area on this map. So it's all within the site boundary. It's just characterized differently just because of the use of the property. A lot of this area is undeveloped, and there aren't any residents, just businesses and undeveloped areas. So we've done some sampling in this area for groundwater, surface water, soil, sediment, groundwater. We've started some sampling around Arkansas and Runyon for Bayota, which is small mammals, fish, and invertebrates. So that sampling is still ongoing, and that's to help us better understand the contamination that we're seeing in that area. And another tool that we're using to understand contamination is our screening level ecological risk assessment and our human health risk assessment, which is supposed to help us understand contamination and how it's affecting humans and plants and animals. Moving forward, we have our conceptual site model, which is another tool that we use to help determine exposure pathways and how plants, animals, and humans are being affected by the contamination. Moving forward, we're looking into the reuse of the site. So that is, how do we plan to reuse it once it is cleaned up? We've been working with we've been working with NGOs for unhoused individuals because we have a large population of unhoused individuals living in the former smelter area and living on, you know, slag stacks and contaminated soils, drinking from the river, contaminated water, using it. So that's something that we're trying to take into account, and we're working with some of these organizations to try to educate them on their risk and educate them on resources in the community that they can use so they can move out of this area. We're also working with our contractors to contact property owners because this is private property. And we want to understand what their future use is for the for the area. And we're working with city planning and city transportation, city housing services as well. So they've all been involved in those conversations and talking about how they plan to reuse that area as well. And we've also had some interest from the Bojantown Foundation. They're interested in Benedict Park area and grants along, you know, reuse revitalization. And they want to know, well, they're concerned because some of the community members are not safe using that area with all the unhoused individuals living there and all the contamination. They don't feel comfortable using the Benedict Park area. So that's something that they've been interested in and have been asking for updates and to be kept involved in the process as we move along. Slide. So looking forward, we are going to continue the characterization of the site. We're going to come out with a study called the Remedial Investigation. That's going to have all our sampling data and all the data that we've collected throughout the years. We're going to use that information to feed into our feasibility study, which will tell us what are our cleanup options are for this area. We will have a proposed plan, which will also explain what the proposed cleanup plan is. Once we look at all the possible alternatives, that will be the time where the community will have the opportunity to give comments to us and we'll submit a formal response to all those comments in a responsiveness summary, and then we'll move forward with a formal document called the Record of Decision that better explains the decision that we chose and how we're moving forward.
Right. So for ongoing enforcement activities, this is just part of the super fund process as we look for funding streams to help cover the cost of taxpayers' dollars. We did have an agreement, a proposed settlement with the citizen inside the O U two area. And that proposal was out for public comment now. It was originally put out on fourteen, August fourteenth. It was extended. Now the deadline for public comment is the twenty fifth of September. If you want more information on that, please let me know, and I can send you the register where it's posted and then the legal team's contact information that can provide you additional information on that proposed settlement agreement with the owner. And then as far as institutional controls, no real update on that. As far as where we're looking, the plan has been submitted and we're continuing to work through the process. Depending on any questions or concerns, that's kind of everything we had to cover today with.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. Questions from council? Councillor Flores?
Yeah, could you walk me through again this? Could you walk me through this slide again, working through liability issues? Explain to me from what side of the fence are you talking about liability here? Are you talking about the homeowner?
No. So what we're talking about here is, well, we're typically EPA does not look for residential property owners to take have liability unless they've done something purposely to disseminate known contamination. What we're talking about here is commercial property owners. And then even then, the EPA takes into a lot in account on what would be considered a liable. Our business owner would be found liable if at all. So right now we have one, a proposed agreement out for public comment with the EPA.
And and I'd like to add, this is really focused on areas associated with the source area, so the former smelter area where most of the waste is located. And part of that is just because of the the way that Superfund, the Circle Act, is written. It looks at all owners and operators past and current as potential responsible parties. But then we have to go through this process where we're going to spend millions of dollars characterizing and cleaning up to where we can to help recoup taxpayer dollars. And that's typically what, you know, where that happens on the commercial properties where there's, you know, a potential for a large windfall gain throughout the process of cleaning up properties for for those property owners. So this helps to resolve that.
Have you identified any, any company that could be?
So in the early days of the process, the the former mining company, Asarco, American Smelting and Refining Company, was the big responsible party. And at that time, we didn't have kind of a, the ability to get to the large sources of funds. A lot of the other Asarco smelters throughout the nation had applied for those funds or had gone into litigation to get a lot of those resources. Early on, so this was between twenty fourteen and twenty seventeen, we applied in each of those years for available Asarco funds, and we received about eight hundred thousand dollars to start the process of characterizing the site, getting some caution and no trespassing signs up around the smelter area, getting the local health department's cooperative grant going for their lead program. But we don't really have those large responsible parties left anymore. So we're looking at current property owners and how that works for that process. It's a normal part of our our circle of process. And a big part of what happens then is looking at value of the land, how it stands to benefit from cleanup, and then ability to pay for those individuals. So we look at it in a, as we see, you know, a responsible and fair manner because we don't want to cause financial difficulty for people, but we do have to try to recoup the taxpayer dollars where we can and in a reasonable manner.
At one time, there was a a stream, I mean, there was a, I guess you'd call it a stream that came down that hill on Santa Fe. I'm assuming that doesn't exist right now, but but that area where all the sediment went, I guess it was going down to Runyon Lake. I don't know where it actually went. But is that area being that, whether it's a stream now or whether it's just a stream bed right now, is that being analyzed?
Yes.
Okay, as part of it.
Yeah, there are several in those green areas that were on the map. There are several springs and drainages continuing, as well as the one through the former smelter area that are part of what we're characterizing.
Great. Well, thank you.
Councillor Martinez Ortega.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And councillor Flores, yeah, right there in that green area is a live stream. I think the EPA is categorizing it as as drainage. But it's an active stream that still is running throughout the winter time and everything. I have a question about the O U two site there in the green, right behind Benedict Park. You know, Black Hills is looking to find areas for an electrical transfer station. And I know that the Community Action Group had some issues with folks being behind Benedict Park and how troublesome of an area that could be to some of the neighbors there. Do you think that there's three acres that you all could work with as you would leave this O U two site behind remediated, whether it's an extensive remediation process or if it's capped off for the future use of an electrical substation, which would just be just capping it off with concrete pretty much? And do you think that there's any kind of potential use there? Where it's all undeveloped, the undeveloped area back there, because it is pretty spacious. I understand it's difficult to get through as we went through a live tour through that area maybe a couple of months ago. Do you think that there's any way that some of these entities looking to put in these substations or use this area for commercial use? I think it should be used for like a bunch of apartments and things, but, you know, I don't have the money for that. They have the money for a substation, though. But what do you think?
Yeah, so that area ultimately is private property. So it would be up to the private property owners what they wanted to do in terms of reuse and talking with the city and zoning, what that future use would look like, but it's definitely a possibility.
So where that big slag pile is, the jungle is all private property back there?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll add on that note, too. We've, we've had several calls with what we call bona fide prospective purchasers. And, you know, potentially folks that are interested in renting or past renters as well and talk them through, you know, what what they're currently doing or what they may want to do. And we would continue to to provide that sort of assistance if people have ideas of a different use or the idea of a land transfer to another entity. You know, perhaps with that idea of if it was apartments or a substation or what have you.
Great, thank you. And I just wanted to reiterate the Community Action Group's desire to not only just cap, but also to remediate as much as possible. But with those future subs or with future uses appropriately, let's find where we can save some of that money. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You obviously indicated you know that there are unhoused people that are staying in O U two. Has any effort been made to reach out to those individuals, to do testing on them and things like that to see what, if any, deleterious effects they might be suffering from from living in that area?
So there's a NGO, a non governmental organization that goes down there almost every week, and they go down there with the physician. And the physician has, from last conversations, they have, you know, brought them in, talked with them about any. from last conversations, they have um, you know, brought them in, talked with them about any um issues that, phys- um medical issues that they've had and um they've been able to see, you know, physicians um if needed. Um but actual blood lead testing, we're actually working with um Pueblo Health Department to see if we can put that into our cooperative agreement for next, for the next seven years, if it's something that's um possible to do with them, if they're willing to do it. We can set up like a mobile lab where they can do some blood lead screening and see um you know, what the levels are in the people that are living down there. So it's in the works.
Okay.
Other questions? Can you talk a little bit about the final, the final ordinance that you said that you're drafting right now? What, what specifically is it going to be outlining or what are the contents?
Yeah, the um with these residential cleanups, uh we often have to have what are called institutional controls. And some sort of administrative document that helps outline where we were able to do our cleanups, but in some places, the more important piece is where might there be contamination that we had to leave in place? Um, and then how might that area be changed in the future? So kind of the, the um simple example that we get a lot of questions around are if you weren't able to clean under my garage and maybe or another old structure, but I want to remove that sometime and and put something different there. Um, how is you not being able to do a cleanup going to affect me? And so we worked with the city and the state. Um, and our state counterparts as well as the Attorney General that represents Clarto Smelter Site. And working on that language of how much volume of soils would require a permit with the city. And um so far what we're working with is five cubic yards if someone were to come in with say a, a permit required um action that they want to take at their property. And then part of uh the, the database that Charles um referred to, we're hoping that that's going to be something to help so that someone knows what the status of sampling is on a property where things were sampled, where they were cleaned up. And then we can help determine. Um, and at that point, when we have institutional controls in place um and and we get to those with the final record of decision, um it'll be a, a more of a, an activity between the state and city um to track where cleanups might need to have this sort of permit process come in place. But we want to be able to, to let people know where cleanups took place. And we want to define the area um and and define an overlay district where these institutional controls would apply. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, no, I, I think that that makes a lot of sense. Um, like setting regulations for future development. When you say you've been working with city departments, what specific departments are you talking about?
So we've been working with the mayor and um his attorney um in the past on that. We've been also closely working with the planning department on the language um that would be appropriate for that ordinance.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have one. Question, and that had to do with uh on a percentage basis, uh how many residential owners of residential homes uh opted out, I guess, or did not allow cleanup for whatever reason?
So I think we have a um, a small percentage of properties that need cleanups that we know about from sampling. I would say, you know, less than thirty properties where we've gotten refusal for the cleanup. It may be even a, a smaller number than that. Um, and you know, it's um, it, that's one of those, these pieces of this process where we try to keep residential sampling and clean up a voluntary process, but we try to explain the benefits of participating in the program and then being able to get a clean bill of health. Um, if you haven't, if you don't need a cleanup after sampling, or if you do need a cleanup, having, having that cleanup done.
But, but that represents what, ten percent uh of the area or?
Well, so we've got, um, you know, if we've, right now, we've got just over two thousand properties in the study area. And we've been able to sample nineteen hundred and fifty-five of those for soil. And right now, we started at about, I don't know, just under fifty percent of the properties needed a soil cleanup. And that's when we were really close to where the smelter stacks were and this, you could see more close in contamination. And then as we've moved out, the percent of properties needing soil cleanups has dropped to about forty-three percent. And less than forty percent needing the indoor dust cleanups. So I don't know if, if folks um um remember any of our earlier presentations where we talked about the idea of we have a lot of properties that have bare soil. And so if we have soil contamination, we do have concern that there's possible track in from the soil into the homes. And it's not typical for Superfund sites to sample or do indoor cleanups, but we thought it was important to try to evaluate and address as many sources of lead as we could. And so we're doing the soil cleanups as well as the indoor dust cleanups. And then this big education piece about other sources of lead in the community since ninety-five percent of the properties are pre nineteen seventy-eight, so the lead, lead paint ban went into effect in nineteen seventy-eight. We just continue to try to educate people on the fact that there could be other of so- sources of lead in their community that we want to address.
If ten years from now, when you're gone, and I want to buy a property in this area through this ordinance, will I be able to determine that maybe I'm buying a property where there was refusal to do anything about the remediation or the testing or anything else? Is that going to be identifiable?
That's our hope, that we're, we're able to share that information. And then that would be something that with, between the city and the state of Colorado. We can answer those questions and then if people um are going through that building process that we have, you know, hopefully as we mentioned this database that will help people identify where cleanups took place. The other piece is that when we get our sampling complete and provide a sampling completion letter or when a cleanup is complete, we ask people to keep that property with the, or that letter with their property. Not to take it away with them if they transfer the property, but to let that stay with the property. And I think that's a piece that we still need to figure out when we move toward institutional controls finalization. Are there other documents that we want to make sure are available? Um, or part of that property record with the assessor's office? And that's something that still, I think, would, you know, need more conversation and
It's probably something that should be recorded with the Pueblo County Clerk. Uh, because it would be a
I think that, and that's, yeah, that's part of that process that we still need to get to the final overlay district after we have a site boundary finalized and then figure out with the city and the state what makes sense um for this.
When you have a property owner that refuses to do anything, uh do you use that as part of your discussion with them that it could affect their future sale in that?
We do. We do.
Thank you.
We, we've also taken a proactive approach with that. We've met with realtors ourselves and our state counterparts. I met with realtors in the area. We get requests all the time from real estate, hey, has this firm property clean? What's the status of this property? So we're trying to take a proactive approach before that verbiage can be finalized. I'm actually posting some taken care of. So we're not just sitting back waiting for it to happen. We're trying to, trying to get ahead of it.
Thank you.
Well, fantastic presentation. Thank you for that update. Um.
Counselor Martinez, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Counselor Maish. I didn't even see you on Zoom.
Okay, um, I, I'm sorry, I came a little bit late into this, but I did want to um ask about um the unhoused living down there. And I see, I heard that you're testing them for possible exposure. Um, if they are found to be positive, um are we, who's liable for that?
So we have not um finalized the plan to do bloodless testing. That's something we're still working out with um Pueblo Health Department to see if it's something they can put into their new agreement for next year. Um, and if they are found with high levels of lead, um the only real, I think, action that would be necessary is to remove them from you know, the source area. And then those levels would begin to drop unless they're having symptoms. I'm sure there are medical um uh medical treatments that can be seeked, but um I guess that's the main reason why we're working with these um uh organizations outside of the government to try to help find housing and resources to see if they can find placement outside of this contaminated area, but that's the issue that we're having. There's not enough um housing, there's not enough resources and um that's our roadblock at the moment.
Yep.
Well, yeah, because aren't we assuming some sort of liability if we're testing to see if they are positive? Um, because you know, obviously if they're going to have to seek treatment, if they're going to have to um, you know, sometimes they'll try to do some sort of um, you know, lawsuit for, because they were exposed to the contaminated area. And I'm just wondering if the city should take a proactive approach and enforce, um you know, the trespassing laws in order to keep them from being exposed. So, because I'd like to see um who exactly will be liable if they do um come down with some sort of lead poisoning.
Mr. Hippolyte, did you want to weigh in on that? From a legal perspective?
I, I don't have any um direct comments uh to the statement. I, the, the only thing I would say is, to the extent that that is the will of council, we'll take a look at it and, and figure out the, the best way we could or can um engage in that kind of process.
Are they trespassing on private property or are they um fast trespassing on a, you know, business property? Um. Would it be a, a city-owned property? Which, where are they, where are they camping at?
So that's a private property that they're living on.
A private property.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the property owner has tried numerous things in the past. Um, and it's, it's an area that we can't keep people out of because there's an active rail line that goes through there. So in the early days of this process, say nineteen, I'm sorry, two thousand fourteen and fifteen, we tried to figure out you know, is there a way to fence some of these areas to keep people out? And because of that active rail line and because of the dense vegetation, it was cost prohibitive. Um, and the property owner doesn't have the financial wherewithal to continually try to keep people out. He's tried to remove um their supplies and materials in the past and you know, there, there's always a replacement, either the same people come back or others take their place in that area. We just haven't been able to find a way to keep people away. So what we've been left with it for now is continued outreach and education to let them know this is not a great place to live and why. And the NGOs were helping us with some of that messaging, uh letting them know where they can get and then um water and and other supplies, but then some of those NGOs also come to that area, meet with them in the park, have conversations about trying to find um housing for them, but it's, that's kind of the hurdle, I think, is, you know, no other places for them to go.
Mm-hmm. Mayor, did you have anything?
The, the property's posted, is it not?
Because of all the, the just foot accessibility under the Mesa Avenue Bridge and the, the rail.
I mean, there are warnings there that sort of warn people that this is not a safe place to be.
Right.
Right? And so if you're trespassing, you, you've been notified that you have to assume some of the risk for your own.
Yep, you don't find any um you don't feel that you should enforce any type of trespassing um ordinances or laws that prohibit people from press, uh trespassing?
Mr. Hippolyte?
I, I just want to be clear for the members of council, to the extent that this is on private property. The private property owner would have to request the city enforced law. So the private property owner would have to call the city report the trespass and request that the person be cited. The city could not, because it is private property, take any individual action on its own.
All right. I'm just wondering if the property owner is aware that they could possibly be liable for the exposure if it continues. So I, I'm, that's what I am concerned about. I mean, does, it does the owner even understand um the possibilities of the liability for letting people stay there and not enforcing the trespassing um what it could lead to in the future. Those were just my questions. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that presentation and I look forward to seeing your guys' plan more solidified in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight. Thank you, EPA.
Have a good evening.
Moving right along on our agenda, we're going to hear from um our City Energy Advisory, Advisory Commission. So can I please have Mr. Dante and Ms. Getz to the podium?
Hi, um, thanks so much for having us, uh counselors and, and mayor. We appreciate the time. We're um in our third year of um service to the city of Pueblo. And uh, we, I guess before I get started, let me do some introductions. My name is Ken Dante. I'm the Chair of the Commission. Laura Getz is the Vice Chair. Uh, we have um several members of the commission here. We get, well, we almost have a, uh, we, we have a quorum actually. Um, if we wanted to have a meeting, um. Anyway, um Laura and myself, we, we started our um um chairmanship a, a few months back. Um, um. I wanted to uh thank the previous Chair, uh Stephen Rocky, and Vice Chair Edgy Walworth, who are still part of the commission for their work. Um, the commission proposed energy efficiency of buildings, uh like the net zero fire stations plan to be built soon. We had multiple meetings to work with county, building department, other city, uh Colorado cities, national labs to drive our policies. Uh, primary focus was planning for energy efficiency in Pueblo buildings to prepare them for electrification. Where the power source is going to be renewable energy. Um, we have some concerns with Excel's Pueblo Innovative Energy Solutions Advisory Committee. The Energy Committee asked to participate and was denied. Uh, this committee proposes technologies like nuclear and hydrogen injection in the methane that will raise the cost of power and distract from much cheaper renewable energy. Uh, this mainly provides Excel with a massive investment profits and extends the life of polluting fuel systems. Such things hurt our already disproportionately impacted status and should not be pursued. Uh, Pueblo County has many landowners ready to build solar farms on our property. Available acreage for solar is not an issue in Pueblo County. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Laura uh to, to give the presentation.
Thank you very much, Ken. Good evening, everyone. Um, we'll try and thank you. We'll try and um blast through this, so please don't hesitate to ask any questions. Uh, so, oops. Just as a reminder, what our commission's mission is, um, we were enacted so that the city could officially encourage and bring about better and more effective use of energy in all its forms. And to help the city reach its goal of a hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty-five. Um, and to monitor franchise agreements and public utility commission proceedings with respect to energy as far as they impact the city, um which they certainly do. And this was driven by a resolution passed in two thousand seventeen committing the city to one hundred percent renewable energy. Um, and these goals include reducing the city's climate footprint, lowering energy bills and growing the local economy. So the future of Pueblo's grid, um Black Hills Energy is our provider, and so we are beholden to whatever energy makeup um they determine uh feeds our grid in the city of Pueblo. Um, so a very important filing they just did was the Colorado Clean Energy Plan. Um, this details eighty percent carbon reduction by twenty thirty, based on two thousand five levels. That seventy percent of electricity will be generated by carbon-free sources by twenty thirty. Um, it will entail four hundred megawatts of new renewable sources, including wind, solar and battery. Um, and it's, you know, will be, there, there are anticipated savings from this, but it also comes, any kind of infrastructure comes at a cost. Um, and so there is a potential for bill impacts that are still to be determined. So what does that mean for the city? Uh, it's an opportunity for the city to take advantage of a lower carbon grid. So if this plan is fully implemented um, the grid will be significantly um quote unquote cleaner and more renewable. Uh, one thing the city can do is beneficially electrify as much as possible to take advantage of this cleaner grid. Um, the city could also work to pursue renewable energy projects of added benefit. Um, and ideally work with Black Hills to close the carbon gap uh between twenty thirty and twenty thirty-five. Um, because we see that plan does not bring you to a hundred percent as a city. Um, so you know, per the existing resolution, you'd want to see what could be done in that five-year period to kind of close that, that gap. So we mentioned beneficial electrification, this So we mentioned beneficial electrification. This word is thrown around in the news and the media. It's become a buzzword. And so what is beneficial electrification? This is where we apply electricity to end uses, where it satisfies at least one of the following conditions without adversely affecting the others. So that means saving consumers money over time, benefiting the environment and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, improving product quality or consumer quality of life and fostering a more robust and resilient grid. So what, what could that look like here? Taking advantage again of the low, lower carbon grid, a hundred percent electrification of any new construction from here on out, endeavoring to make it fossil fuel-free, conversion of existing appliances to electric, after meaningfully completing energy efficiency upgrades first and foremost. Also considering the possible dual-fuel hybrid uses for resilience, depending on their existing fuel source and conversion of transportation to fossil fuel-free options as transportation is a huge driver of overall emissions. So pursuing renewable energy carve-outs. Again, Black Hills in this plan said they'll bring four hundred megawatts of new renewable energy online. There may be an opportunity to partner with Black Hills and renewable energy contractors to develop projects that bring the city and its residents additional benefits. So that would be energy bill cost reductions, you know, opportunities to target those with, you know, affordability concerns who might need it most, additional workforce development and then localized resilience options, you know, at city facilities or other critical hubs in the community. One example here, we've got Denver's Housing Authority constructed a large community solar garden. And they were able to support a significant number of their residents with targeted incentives to significantly reduce energy bills. So again, here are a bunch of sample strategies of how we could go about greening the grid. And these are general recommendations that we would encourage city departments to potentially consider here. And in some cases, policy that may end up at, you know, on city council's plate for formal decision-making. One of these proposals would be thoroughly assessing city facilities for energy savings and renewable energy opportunities. This is called an energy performance contract. You may have heard of it before. School districts go through it, the county's gone through it, the city's gone through it in the past. I believe it was over ten years ago at this point. And generally, it's, this Colorado Energy Office kind of oversees this. So it's a rapid, transparent process that guarantees savings from day one. It can be very significant and I would not be exaggerating by suggesting that there's a chance that every month the city did not take action on something like an energy performance contract, you could be losing easily twenty thousand in terms of utility bills, bill losses when there was potential for efficiency. Another sample strategy would be requiring that all city managed RFPs for new construction, retrofits, leases and new vehicle purchase. Purchases include at least one zero emission alternative. So again, this is not requiring or mandating that all new construction be all-electric. It would just require that you at least consider one zero emission alternative in terms of budget and long-term cost savings over the lifetime of a facility to make sure you have all information to make a calculated decision about what it, what it would mean for a new facility or retrofitted facility. Another example would be incentivizing all-electric new construction retrofits through financial perks. This could be rebates, a streamlined regional building department application and permitting process. We've seen this in a couple different cities. There's one example up there, the Green Building Program in Florida. Different communities have chosen to incentivize all-electric new construction through revised permitting fee structures that don't penalize installation of all-electric appliances. And in some cases, it wasn't an intentional penalization, it's just the way the permitting process occurs. So lots of different ways to consider this. You know, also you could consider applying for federal funds to make any incentives, ensure that incentives do not negatively impact city budget. So opportunities to pull in additional funding for perks that spur local citizen action. Another strategy would be supporting commercial energy efficiency and electrification while developing a supportive workforce. A huge, huge workforce opportunity here. And a major gap is energy auditing skills. So a significant number of our businesses, if anyone owns or is familiar with someone who owns a building over fifty thousand square feet, they probably recently received a letter that they are now required to benchmark their building with the state of Colorado and will be required to meet a certain energy, energy score with that facility in coming years. So it's not just our large buildings. So their, large buildings are being affected by policy right now. But our small businesses are struggling with energy bills. And there's a huge opportunity for them to take advantage of new tax credits that are available. Rebates and tax credits have never been higher for our business community. And so a big, bringing in a company who's, who has the capacity to kind of do a mass energy auditing of our community, of any business that wanted to sign up, could be an extremely effective way to reach out and support our community and connect them with a lot of the funding that does require a, a higher level audit for them to take advantage of it. Another proposal is spearheading community communication about federal and state funding opportunities. There, again, if you're not deep within this world, and even when you are, it can be hard to stay on top of all of the incentives that are out there between the state and federal government right now. And so any additional communication work that can be done around incentives that are available to our business owners, to our residents, could go a long way. Again, you can stack almost all of these credits. And so you could purchase a new electric vehicle for under ten thousand dollars in some cases right now, depending on your, your current income level. And most residents likely do not know about that. You could also stack to get over seven thousand dollars off a new HVAC system. If it, if it was a heat pump system that met the right criteria. So again, huge money out there for the average household. And we want to make sure everyone knows about it. And then the city has, the city's strapped, the city is doing everything it can to apply for a wealth of funding across all sectors right now. And we are extremely appreciative for the work that the city is doing to go after that money. We know that there's only so much capacity to pull in energy-specific funding, but there are endless opportunities out there to go after it. I would, I would say target a million, you know, a minimum of fifteen million over the next several years. It would not be unreasonable at all with the money that's out there that Pueblo would easily qualify for. And so any way you can staff up or build up capacity in terms of grant writing assistance or create formal pathways for community stakeholders to submit ideas, you know, put, put out some of these challenges or prizes and encourage stakeholders to get together and to go after them and maybe provide some backend city support just to bring more money into the community. Because to that point, we are a disproportionately impacted community. This is the environmental justice mapping tool you may or may not be familiar with that the state of Colorado has put together. Pueblo lights up on the map and we are considered the number one most disproportionately impacted community in Colorado. And so in terms of going after money, certainly at the state level, we should be the state's number one priority here. In terms of federal funding, we're considered a disadvantaged community. Most of our city census tracts here are disadvantaged. And again, that puts us in a higher, more competitive box for going after funding. That would make it worth our while to pursue. And then finally, just celebrate successes. So the city of Pueblo has a new energy coordinator that we had recommended at our previous presentation, I think, two years ago, that the city consider hiring an energy coordinator to kind of take on all of the programming and outreach that, that really needs to happen. And so we're delighted that the city has brought on a new part-time energy coordinator. And, you know, he's getting up to speed rapidly. We're very impressed. The city received a NEVI award to install a DC fast charging plaza, which is significant and truly puts Pueblo on the map for electric vehicle charging and an EV planning award. So it was the local government EV readiness grant. That will hopefully start to be executed soon and can help again with city readiness around transportation electrification. So the final, final slide is so in terms of nuclear, there's been a lot of conversation about nuclear. From the perspective of the Energy Advisory Commission, nuclear is not considered a renewable energy resource. It's, and because of that, or it is not considered that because it is problematic for the environment and human health. It is not renewable. These projects could be extremely cost prohibitive and they have extremely long timelines. As Ken had mentioned, there is the PISA committee that is strongly considering nuclear solutions in our region. The city is not a part of any of those conversations and we would strongly advise that the city have a representative at the table to ensure just energy transition. And so Comanche, as we know, is annexed by the city. So if anything were to happen on former Comanche lands, you know, that would in fact be within city jurisdiction. Again, important conversations that the city really ought to be included in. Thank you very much.
Well, yeah, thank you so much for those tangible solutions too. Energy Advisory Commission, questions from council?
I did have a, some asks. And I, and I think Laura, you know, included that in her presentation, but I kind of reduced it down to the three issues, okay? One is that we start these energy performance contracts as soon as possible because we feel like there's a tremendous savings opportunity. As a matter of fact, you wouldn't execute the energy performance contracts unless they save you money.
So I actually have a question about that real fast, Ken. How much does an EPC cost?
So the, the initial auditing phase, you would commit to, to pay it upfront if you did not move forward with the energy performance contract. That is often in the two to three hundred thousand dollar range for that audit, but that's generally rolled into the broader project. And again, nothing is recommended to the city unless it has a positive payback for the city over the lifetime of that measure, whether it's LEDs, a new HVAC system, et cetera.
Do we have any EPCs in process right now?
Public Works Department is working on this. Yes.
For what building?
Pardon me?
Is there a specific building that they're in the process of auditing?
All city buildings.
I think you would, you would look at all, all the buildings in that contract. And I, and, and likely, there are probably some grant monies that would, would help incentivize that too. We could probably come up with a, a program. So now we have an energy coordinator to kind of help us nurture our long those, those ideas. So that, George Andrews, who's the energy coordinator, can help with that. The other, the other issues is that we need to start policies that would require new, new city buildings to be built to net zero standards. This, this is, just, just to set the example, we have some buildings in Pueblo that, that have done that. The, the fire station should be net zero buildings. So let's set the example. And then we can accelerate building codes to incentivize private facilities and residents to build the green building standards. And we would push a hundred percent electrification of those buildings, just to, to make them green. And then finally, there's this, we're, we're feeding through a fire hose of grants, okay? It, it's, it's difficult for one or two people to kind of manage all that. So I hope, I, I hope we can staff to, to take advantage of the grants for renewable energy electrification, weatherization for low income and EVs. Because we're headed to, to electrification of everything. We, we need to make sure that all our buildings in Pueblo, homes, businesses are up to par. So, so people can take advantage of, of energy savings.
Well, yeah, thank you for that presentation. I'm glad to hear that Public Works is already working on the citywide audit for an EPC. Because that, given the urgency that you spoke about of doing it as soon as possible, I'm glad that we started that process. Does the commission ever testify at PUC hearings? PUC hearings?
No, the commission itself has not. And so I, I can let Mayor Gradisar elaborate, but I know that the city has contracted with a law firm to help the city formally intervene in PUC proceedings. And that, I think, is of extreme importance, making sure you're regularly apprised of any, any filings that Black Hills puts forward before the PUC that could potentially affect any of the city or the broader community. And then preparing a statement accordingly. And the commission is always happen, happy to provide additional input in terms of potential statements. But the city has been a formal intervening party regularly as far as I know.
Does council receive any of that information? Because I don't recall ever hearing about, about PUC updates from our attorney? Oh, I didn't know it was our attorney. I thought it was PUC in general. Do you, Mr. Hippolyte?
So yes, you did just receive one from me, from our attorney who represents the PUC. The city has intervened in a PUC proceeding to do with Excel's new gas plant or, or renewable energy plant.
Great. For the federal funds for rebates, when you say we can apply for federal funds, so it doesn't impact city budget, are you talking about grant, federal level grants? Or can you elaborate a little bit more about that?
Yes, if, you know, if the city were to come up with a program that said, we're going to provide an additional city level rebate of five hundred dollars, for example, for an installation of a heat pump for the purchase of an EV. That would be a program the city could put in a state or a federal grant if you find the right opportunity and have that pot of money available to help drive community decision-making. We know there are significant rebates that are coming down at the state level and you might find that that's enough to start shifting decision-making. And again, that's where communication to, to our citizens could spare the city having to do that at all. But we might find that a little additional rebate at the local level could help kind of tip the scales in terms of folks installing a heat pump system over a traditional gas furnace, for example.
I, I know that we, we had an opportunity and we just didn't have the resources to take advantage of it. It was called the Buildings Up opportunity, where they actually call it a prize. So you, so you kind of defined an electrification project for, you know, for your community. And we, we kind of identified it. But our, at that time, our grant writer was just overwhelmed with all, all the activities. She couldn't meet the deadline. So, so there's, you know, opportunities that pop up like that. Today, we might be able to handle that because of the energy coordinator could help us with that. But even that may not be enough. We, we may need more staff. So I think, you know, in the long run, as, as, as we do this conversion to renewable energy and, and conversion to EVs, that, that we staff an, an energy office, maybe to, to take advantage of, of all these funds that are coming in to help us do that.
Do we have any other questions or comments for the Energy Advisory Commission?
I do, counselor. Yes. So I think we talk, ever since I've been on council and been listening to this, there's never been actual dollar amounts given, you know. We talk about jobs in the solar industry. And yet, you know, to construct a solar farm is, takes a while, but once it's, once it's complete, every, all those jobs move on to the next place. And you've got two or three people, because it only takes a small handful of people to run a solar farm, like under five, I believe. And so, you know, I always hear all these buzzwords, you know, more jobs. The other, that's, that's one concern of mine with going to renewable energy is how, how many jobs are we actually going to be losing? And then also, what is the economic impact to just a single household? To have to switch over all of their appliances. And with their vehicles to something that, you know, to from gas to electric. And things like that. Do we, we never talk about a dollar amount and that can be very impactful. I know that. You say there are grants and grants are usually income based. There's qualifications there. But what, what about the average citizen about what is, what, what's that going to cost to switch their household over? To a renewable energy sources?
Thank you for those comments. I'm happy to, to entertain those. So and I'll start with job creation. So in terms of jobs. When it comes to renewable energy, the new tax credits tied to renewable energy. Are so significant. That you, you rarely see developers building solar arrays these days without meeting. The requirements for these credits and these credits require that you use. High paying union labor to construct this work. And so we're seeing a boon in. In the benefits to unions. Who receive this work and unions are generally a pipeline for. Again, higher wages and more sustainable, long-term job prospects. But I would strongly encourage everyone to think outside just the renewable energy. Workforce, because one of the largest opportunities here is in the trades. And just here in our local community in terms of HVAC, plumbing, electrical. Much of this work is going to be retrofitting and there is a significant amount of it. That will require, again, high paying. Trade labor in our community. As well as, as building energy analysts and that is a, a very valuable skill set. Nationwide. So in terms of what it could cost to convert a home to all electric transportation, it absolutely comes with a price tag. And that's where we're seeing, and I, I should always mention that Black Hills absolutely has rebates. That are now stacked with federal rebates and state rebates to make a huge dent in that overall cost. So you take that cost and again, the state is working on a number of. Really exciting financing mechanisms that make these transformations more accessible to folks. But long term, you look at the savings year over year because this. This electrification. Comes with fuel savings in terms of the vehicle you drive. In terms of maintenance, they come with. Cost savings in terms of. Because they're so efficient in terms of what you're paying year over year in terms of. Adding up your utility bills. Again, always make sure you're adding your electric and whatever you're paying for gas or propane. To get your total utility cost year over year. I just finished writing a grant this afternoon that was looking at a community. They were switching from propane versus, I know we're primarily natural gas. But we're expecting those households to save $4,000 a year. With some basic electrification. That is how efficient this equipment is. And so in the long term. Households will win out in the overall switch here.
Um, so you don't. Because you talk about, you know, in state and federal funded incentives, that those comes from tax, taxpayer dollars. They just don't come out of the air from nowhere. So. It's just, it's just so vague. And I think, you know, in order to win it over when it comes to the public. And they like to see dollar amounts and so forth. And then, you know, I, I see that you're shooting down nuclear, the choice of nuclear energy. And when I lived in Europe, we had a nuclear plant near where I lived and it seems. I guess there's about 400, almost 500 cities in America. I'm not in America, but across around the world that have nuclear as a source of energy and. I would like to hear a presentation on nuclear energy. I know that's a, a lot of the public talks about using that as a resource. Rather than just a couple of sentences saying, we're not going to entertain that.
Yeah, I think, I think with nuclear energy, there's this. Levelized cost of energy that, that they look at different generation sources. So you can compare them one to one. And currently wind and solar are the lowest cost energy. Nuclear is somewhere between. Three to 15 times more expensive. And, and I think the big issue is that we need to replace our fuel source with. A carbon free generation and these nuclear power plants aren't going to really be available until about 2040. And we don't have time to wait. So.
So five years, I mean, because you know what? You say that it's more expensive, but again, it. We don't know, I, I can't imagine Black Hills energy going into this whole transformation. And lose money from what they're making now. So I'd like to see some actual dollars and some projections of what it's going to cost. Households and what they're going to save. You know. With either, either way of doing it, whether it be wind and solar or whether it be nuclear. Again, you guys don't narrow it down. People, people base their decisions based off of dollar savings. Not just, you know, you're gonna save. They want to see what they're gonna save. They want to see if nuclear costs more, what that, what that means. Because you know, in European countries where they have a lot of nuclear plants, they don't have the economic resources that. We have in order to keep their households running. And so. You know, I would like to see if you're going to come and you're going to be a commission and you're going to come and ask us, we represent the people. The people like to see the bottom line when it comes to the dollar. Actual dollar cost, you know, savings.
There's a couple of resources you could look at. Bloomberg or Lazard and they talked about the levelized cost of energy. That might be something for you to read, to understand.
Well, you, you're reading it, you're the committee and you're supposed to be conveying it so that the. And then, and read it, when you're reading it, you can also put some cost savings, some actual cost savings, a dollar on some cost savings.
I know, I know one thing I did personally. I converted, I converted from gas, water heat to a heat pump, electric water heater. And I'm saving money. So that's, that's, that's a big example. So if you, if you, you know, have to replace your water heater now, of course. A lot of people wait until the system goes out to replace it. So here you have to, you have to do a little pre-planning. But once you do that, you can save money. So here's a, here's a great electrification project. To, to save money. And, you know, heat vac systems. A heat pump system is, is in our future. So these things are in our future. And you have to, you have to prepare your homes for that future. So.
They have all, they have a lot of heat pump systems with their furnaces and their ACs in that. And so my bill there wasn't any less money than it is here with my. You know, my boiler baseboard water heat. And so I'm, I'm not seeing that from experience.
I do know that Counselor Tencio has a question, Counselor Tencio.
Well, not a question. It's just that the nuclear question is XL is the one that will. Build if they do at the site of Comanche, not Black Hills and that wouldn't affect. Pueblo consumers anyway. All that energy goes north to Denver. So.
Other, other than us becoming a place where all that nuclear waste is stored.
Great. Well, I, I really appreciate. The Pueblo Energy Advisory Commission's update. I did have a quick follow-up question to the EPC. How long does each audit take? Cause if Public Works is doing it already right now, then we should be anticipating a report by when?
Public Works doesn't do the audit. They're exploring contractors to do the audit.
Oh, so we're just in the.
Right.
My impression with your answer, Mayor, was that we were already doing it.
Sorry for the confusion. We're investigating the contractors that would do that.
And how long does each contractor take to perform an audit?
So typically, yeah, there's, there's a pre-selected group of contractors who could run this entire project. Selected by the Colorado Energy Office. Most of them usually respond to an RFP that the city would put out. I think that's the first step. The city needs to take is put out that RFP. And then you would, you would select one of those, you know, seven or eight pre-selected contractors. They come perform the audit. They, they bring in all of their staff at once and they usually can do it in a couple of weeks. And draw up a report for you pretty quickly. That kind of lays out all of the measures. The city would then decide which measures to take action on. And they would run the entire project for the city. In my experience, they've also helped. Cities or school districts or counties apply for additional supportive grant funds as well. Depending on the contractor you choose.
Yeah, the last time we did it, we did, did it with Johnson Controls and I brought that initiative to the city. Out of one of the CML conferences, actually. And it took a couple, two or three months to do the audit because they have to go through every single building and. And look at all the windows and all, they'd look at everything. So, yeah, it takes, takes a little while, but it's not long.
Well, I'm excited to hear that we're exploring the possibility and I hope that we get the RFP out soon. Thanks. All right, moving right along on our agenda, our final presentation is from our very own city clerk, Ms. Stoller about election changes for 2023.
Good evening, City Council Chair Martinez, Mayor Gradisar. I'm here to talk about elections. So there's a couple items that I want to touch on today. The first is the fact that at the last legislative session, the General Assembly passed House Bill 231245. Which will impose campaign contribution limits and more rigorous reporting standards on municipal elections. CML lobbied against this bill, but it ultimately passed and its requirements will affect the city in Pueblo starting, starting January 1st, 2024. So CMS General Counsel recommended that municipalities take a hard look at these changes and consult with their attorneys. To determine if anything needs to be done to avoid the application of HB 231245 or to incorporate it. And in our case, as a home rule municipality, Pueblo has the opportunity to decide if we'd like to move forward with these changes to the campaign finance laws or not. So there's three basic areas that we're going to be changing. Retention, which is how long the city has to keep documents. Reporting, which is how often candidates have to file their campaign finance records and the campaign contribution limits. So under the PMC updates, CML also recommended that a clear campaign finance violation complaint policy be established for municipalities that don't already have one. So we'll discuss that. And then finally, we'll address a, a number of other issues with our code that could make the elections flow a little easier with the county as well as aid in the potential. Meryl runoff election. So here's a comparison of the current policy for local municipalities and then the changes that'll go into effect in 2024. So the retention policy change is from one year to 10 years and that's particularly burdensome and will require additional storage for the city clerk's office. Additionally, these documents are always initially requested, but usually not past the election itself. And then any complaints that would use these records as evidence would have to be submitted long before the one-year retention period and for incumbents. That period is after you leave office. So we would still have yours on file. The reporting schedule would change to add an additional. Reporting period and to change the other dates for reporting. In my experience, not a lot of campaigns are really getting going before the 60-day mark. Some have a few donations and buy signs, but the 60 days out is really only about a week after candidates turn in their signatures. So they're just getting confirmed for the ballot at that point and the real campaigning hasn't necessarily gotten started. I also don't know if you're aware, but the process for getting a campaign. Reporting the candidates to turn in their paperwork can be particularly difficult. And having to send out reminders and chase people down because they're racking up charges of $10 a day for late filings. Is not actually something that the city clerk's office is really built for. And we did finally have a, a candidate come in to pay $4,000 worth of fines for a previous election that had been on the book for years. So believe me when I tell you that these can add up and that not everyone files on time. So adding an extra 60 days out would take a lot of work and coordination at a time when we're already verifying signatures and doing the ballot draw. Campaign contributions, this would be another area of compliance to have to keep up with. CML recommends creating a campaign finance complaint policy because there's likely to be a lot more complaints when these types of limits are in effect. Based on these changes and CML's recommendation, as well as conversations with the city attorney. What I'm proposing is to do a freeze on the current rules as they are today in 2023. And then to allow council to individually consider these changes that the legislature might make on an individual basis and as they come. We would accomplish this by passing current rules in our city code and then updating them as desired by council. I would recommend that we leave the items mostly as, as aside from maybe the reporting schedule for the, the runoff election. Which makes sense for our Meryl race because it's based on a shorter timeline. And if council wants to take up discussions on any of these items at a later point to alter the code, you would be able to do that. So that's one item. Now we're going to move on to campaign finance complaints as I'm assuming you'd like me to go all the way through and then come back for questions after. So for campaign finance complaints, currently the city's charter and code are silent regarding campaign finance complaints, which means that we default to the state's. Complaint policy. However, this is an imperfect policy because the references to the offices like of the Secretary of State. And candidates running for governor rather than for mayor, city council. So in consultation with CML, I began working on a city-specific policy after reviewing several policies from other municipalities. And this is essentially what it would look like. The main change here from the state version is the prosecution piece. The state statutes refer to the division investigating the complaint and filing with the hearing officer, conducting discovery, et cetera. These are not really in the abilities of the city clerk's office. So our policy better addresses that by using what we do have, which is the city attorney's office and our municipal court system. So this will require a bit of coordination and regarding the inputting of local rules. And regulations for our municipal court. So it'll take some time to write and implement. But would result in a cleaner and clearer system for dealing with campaign finance complaints. And then on to our third topic. So the rest of these slides are smaller changes that I would like to make to our current election code. To update it and bring us in line with current state rules. I'd eventually like to revamp the entire election code. But for now, I prioritize the items that would affect the, a possible Meryl runoff in our coordination efforts with the county. So for example, the, the voter requirement comparison. So these are the requirements for the state of Colorado versus the city of Pueblo. I basically want to call your attention to the two bottom items here. Which are different. These are currently problematic because the city does not do voter registration. It's done by the county. And these questions are not questions asked of city voters versus county voters when they're registered. So I'd like to bring these two items, that's the, are not confined any, any public prison and are not under guardianship. Into up to date with the state of Colorado requirements, ideally before the November election. Otherwise we'll have to do some fancy balloting to make that work. Another change I'd like to make is to the write-in candidate deadlines. Currently it's 30 days before, however. The county requires that we have all their printing information to them 60 days before. So we would change, I would suggest changing that to 64 days before, which matches the. The, the requirement for the state Title I requirements for nonpartisan elections. And then also puts that after the signature verification, but before the county clerk's office has to have all that content. You'll notice on this year's ballot, we basically put in a write-in candidate line after every race. Because we didn't know if there was anyone that was going to file after the printing deadline, but before our 30-day deadline. So this is something that would fix that. Another item is election judge comparison or compensation, excuse me. Basically, our code states that an election judge may only receive $60 in full compensation for the entirety of their work and that was fine. When an election was one day, but with the way mail ballots work, they're working for three weeks. But with the way mail ballots work, they're working for three weeks about. And so paying them $60, I don't know that we'd have any takers if we had to do that. So for the mayoral race, we'd like to, to change that. We do think it's safer not to put any type of number on it, but to just, you know, remove it in full or to say something about comparable rates type of thing. So I did actually receive another email from the county clerk this morning, and she pointed out a couple more that I had sent her that she did feel were problematic. One was to repeal the voter registration deadline that we have at 29 days, which is currently a problem, because you can, you should be able to register to vote up until the day of, per the state statutes. And then also, we have a rule that says the city, you have to reside 29 days in the city, whereas the state of Colorado just has that you have to reside in the state of Colorado for 22 days. So we would want to bring that in line as well. So what I'm proposing is that we all bring an ordinance forward that would freeze the campaign policy in place as it currently is. And then if there were other items that council wanted to bring forward to change, to incorporate, then we could definitely do that. And then also to bring an ordinance forward to discuss all of these other items that I just reviewed. And then later on, we would, the city attorney and I would do some work on that campaign finance complaint policy. There's some other changes to the code that would have to meet first along the municipal court lines before we would be able to get to that. Any questions?
Thank you, Marissa, for that presentation. Questions from council? Counselor Warner?
So I kind of, I kind of sort of forgot what I was going to ask. What was it? I don't know. Come back to me. I'll think of it again.
Other questions or comments?
Counselor Martinez?
Counselor My Street?
Yes. Marissa, would you please, you're saying, you're saying to, when you say freeze the campaign finance policies, you're saying keep them as they are until 2024?
I'm saying that we permanently freeze them the way that they are today, because on January 1st, 2024, those three types of changes that I mentioned about the retention and the reporting and the limits on contributions will go into effect.
Okay, so just freeze them throughout.
So freezing those three items from going into effect, and will also prevent any future legislation changes. I mean, and if council does want to end up incorporating those changes, they're able to, we'll just, you know, you just have to run an ordinance to change the code.
Okay. And then something that I noticed the other day when I was looking at the city council maps. And they were, it showed updated is from 2022. But we did the redistricting this year in 2023. Isn't that correct?
No, it was actually done in 2022. It was late, late in the year in 2022, but it was 2022.
Okay, so it is updated.
Yes, that is the most updated map.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Warner?
Okay, I remember it. I think I just slipped into another dimension before I was ready to ask the question. Doesn't a lot of this stuff need to go, go to vote for charter changes? And it seems like some pieces that would replace what the charter said.
No, this is just the election code. So this is in the, the Pueblo Municipal Code, nothing that's in the charter.
Okay.
I actually like the multiple days of reporting for finances. I think that it adds transparency to campaigns. And I, I kind of like the limits, too. I think that that means that candidates have to work harder at diversifying their financial portfolio. So that's just my inclinations, but are there, are there, so this, the freeze is going to be on the first reading for the next regular?
I don't know that we'll have it that soon, but we'll work on it to get it done before, definitely before 2024. I would hope to get most of this done aside from the campaign finance complaint policy before the November election.
Do you know of any other cities in Colorado that are freezing their current ones to kind of opt out of?
Most of the large municipalities already have their own campaign finance policy, so the changes that the legislature make will not automatically go into effect there, because they already have their own campaign finance policy in place.
Other questions or comments? Saying none. Thank you, Ms. Stoller.
Thank you.
For that presentation. And then that concludes our work session agenda. So I'll conclude this work session at 7:05.